Regular meeting, January 9. Chief, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, living, free, and just as for all.
Thank you, Chief. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Tom Daniels, Kim Hall, Patricia, Jim, Sarah, Justin.
Present.
I want to make a couple, or just one announcement. I want to welcome Justin and Patricia to City Council. Welcome to the fire. Chief, I think you've got a couple of announcements you want to make.
We don't have too much of your time. One of the officers I was on here today, he was hired in 2016. Keith Mayer was hired in May 2016. Zach Mitchell, we hired him December 2016, and bring us up to the full complement of 10 officers for the department. They're both certified, so they're hitting the ground running. And also in 2016, Zach Stapleton was named the 2016 Police Officer of the Year. And he also won the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for removing impaired drivers from our highways. So he won those two respective awards for 2016. Keith Mayer's on the call at Walmart right now, and hopefully he'll be here before y'all leave, and you can get to meet and greet with these guys. Also today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and it's also Assistant Chief Mike Rowe's birthday. There you go.
Alright, so can we give all of you a round of applause? I need a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I also need an approval of debt reports.
I'll say it.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we need an approval to pay bills as presented.
That's usually my thing. I can't fault you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I would like to, at this time, ask council to reappoint Mr. Tim Hall for the remaining term as your other city council meeting. So I will need a motion to do that, please.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tim Hall as councilperson.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all very much.
You're more than welcome. Is Mr. Hale here?
He is.
Now make sure I don't get any of these, any of these names wrong. We need to appoint some members to the Recreation Board. And Mr. Hale has given me a list of these names. If you have a problem with them, then you need to say so, I'm sure you won't. Sean Cole, Sarah Daniel, Alan Haney, Seth Lauffer, Chris Music, Dustin Ratliff, Grady Underwood, Lita Ward, and Jennifer McCourt-Wilson. So can I get a motion to approve these members to the Recreation Board?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. It'll be approved.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that the whole board?
That's a big group.
Is that the complete board now? That's complete. That's what I was asking, because that's usually, usually we just put on a member or two at a time, you know, when I was asking that. So how long, how long has it been since they met? I mean, has it been a while?
It's been a while.
Okay. I'm glad to see you all meeting again, then.
I'm gonna meet on a regular basis.
Hey, Mr. Hale, do you want to inform them you are gonna meet tomorrow night, right?
Tomorrow night, five. We're gonna try to meet the second Tuesday on our personal media every month or every other month, or two weeks, and see how things progress, and what we need to talk about, what we need to do.
They'll be here?
Yes.
Okay.
And you might want to add, this council being such a good council, that we need to start...
We need to start working together.
We need to start going.
Yeah, we need to move and move, change this place, get some things done.
We need the first reading of amendment to ordinance number 2015-003.
This is an amendment to the occupational license tax ordinance. The amended ordinance is provided in the packet. Essentially, the only amendment is that the occupational license tax shall be measured by 1.25% of all wages and compensation paid or payable in the city for work done or services performed or rendered in the city by every resident, non-resident, who is an employee, and be the net profit from business conducted in the city by a resident or non-resident business entity. What this does is it changes, I guess, back in 2015, the rate was increased to 1.25%. And that 1.25% rate was to go from April 1, 2015, until March 31, 2017. This amendment takes out the limited period of the increase and increases the rate to 1.25% until the ordinance would be amended again. So essentially, this just keeps the 1.25% rate currently being paid as the applicable rate until further amendment.
Do any of you want to discuss that briefly?
I just want to say something about it. I don't necessarily want to discuss it. As you well know, Mayor, we were all on that when we decided to end it on March 31st. But I was going to ask that we keep it on, and I don't want to, I really don't want to misrepresent to the public, because initially, that is what we certainly intended to do. But I think with some of the projects, particularly the Carter Lane, one of them, that it is so important that we get it done, and we aren't really sure yet. I don't know what we're gonna discuss tonight, but I know we're not really sure yet what we're gonna have to pay extra on that.
Right, on the properties, buying the properties.
So I hate that we have to do it, but I feel that we need to do it, and I hope that the citizens will understand that we didn't really lie to them, but we can revisit it. Is that the way that reads?
Yes, we can. We can revisit it at any time.
Yep.
I just wanted to say that, because I think everybody feels that way, too. You were on the city council.
Oh, yeah. I was on council that time. Yes, I was.
So you're saying that what you said is it can be repealed at any time, with council discretion incorrect?
Yeah, we can revisit that at any time.
The only thing I said was, this is the only comment I had about it, and of course, you and I had a little conversation about this the other day, and I put my two cents in there, which, I mean, I'm not knocking it, and I'm not saying we don't do it, okay? Because I agree, we need the revenue, okay? The other thing I made a suggestion was, is maybe take part of this money, if they can't do all of it, and maybe put it in like a contingency fund to have some rainy day money. So it's like, we need a fire truck. She's talking about the Carter Lane thing, so we got some money to put back now. Jeff, is there's nothing that says we can't do that, is there, legally?
I don't know if there's anything that says you can't do it. I mean, you don't have to do it.
I know, I mean, we don't have to, but I mean, there's anything that says we can't?
No.
Because, I mean, we've had some points brought up in council meetings before, when we needed to put back a few dollars, you know, so that...
Right.
Because we're looking, probably gonna need some amateurs again for a long, you know, I'm saying.
Well, you've got garbage trucks, you've got police cars, you've got several things you've got to have.
As long as we can still say sovereign, you know, and I mean, I'm not...
It's just hard to specify every possible contingency. I mean, I don't do it however you want to do it.
You don't know whether we're gonna need the money, that's true. You don't know whether we're gonna need the money.
But we can definitely take a look at that, right, Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
That'd be my suggestion, if we could take, figure out how much we could, and Kim, you know how much we could spare without, and still have, be able to pay the bills and keep ourselves. And what we borrowed the money for to, and put this on, that is paid off, correct?
No, we owe one more payment.
One more payment?
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
One more payment, Jim.
One more, that's great. I just had to ask that quick, to make sure.
Yeah, and we owe another payment.
But if you could, you know, tell us immediately what proceeds of that we could put back in a fund, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
That's all I got to say, though. I mean, I have no problem.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the first reading?
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Ms. Virgie, we've got to open some bids on a generator for the Recreation Center. This is two items Rec Center's got on the agenda tonight. Mr. Hale must be doing a stand-up job. Gibbs Electrical Solutions LLC, and the price is $44,900.
Is this parts labor and all?
It looks like to me that they've got everything included in their bids.
The bids that's included everything.
This is from Kim, right?
Just for my information.
Except for the, except for the, there has to be a steel structure to elevate it above the 500-year float plane. We couldn't ask them to do that until we knew what kind of units that we would need, and those all have to be architectural drawings and all that, so...
Got you, thank you.
And this bid is from Tim Branham, Kentucky Electrical Contractor Incorporated, at $37,733.42.
Could you repeat that, please?
What was the company?
Tim Branham, Kentucky Electrical Contractor Incorporated. Now, what we need to do, I think, as a council, is we need to make sure that Mr. Gary McClure and Regina go over these two bids and make sure that everything in there is what's supposed to be in there, before we make a decision on who to award this bid to. Now, that's my suggestion. Any discussion on that?
You don't not look at it every day. I agree with you, I think it needs to be, you know, need them to look over it, make sure. What was the other bid? What was it, did you say?
Forty-four.
Forty-four nine.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that. Just let them just check it out, make sure that everything's the way it should be, and then bring it back.
So we don't need to take action on that right now? We want to wait, make sure that they evaluate everything, review, and whatever them, we'll take action, maybe in a special call meeting if we have to have one, or the next meeting. Yes, Regina?
Jeff, do they have to make a motion to accept those bids, or...
They've accepted the bids, I don't need to hear the motion. I mean, they're submitted.
It's a timeframe limit on it, of us making a, making the decision. I mean, do we have any certain amount of time, right?
I don't think that you're procuring the code. You mentioned the timeframe, it's called, we've already hit all the other time rates. We just have to check, it's a really detailed respect time.
What do you want to lose?
Oh, no.
Yeah, the grant, they talk about, does the grant have any time?
That's what I'm talking about, what the company is doing.
You're a long way from that.
Okay.
Mr. Alan Bowling, did I pronounce that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. He is from Air Med Care, and he would like to make a short presentation to council.
We're based in MS Kentucky, we're the plot medical helicopter with ECS, hopefully it's a good thing, a lot of bad things. Been there since November 13, 2013. We've got 260 bases in 32 states, and we're 24/7. The paramedics, nurses, and pilots that go on each plot. We offer slot, the slot membership for different cities. Prestonsburg recently got this, and Almond Beach recently got this. But this encompasses that the city pays for this, and anybody in the city residents, and there's income, and getting one of these. But if they're flown anywhere in Johnson County, unless they're flown out of Johnson County, there's no cost to that paying. The average cost is around $23,000. I've never seen one that low, but they're averaging between $23,000 and $400. Out of Johnson County last year, I'm just, there was 23 plots, just out of Johnson County, and that, if you went to the very lowest of $23,000, that's $529,000. The reason I ended up at the shop was an accident. I bought this for myself, with deduction on my insurance, I had $3,000 deductible, and it only covered 80%. Your interest basically on it covers $11,000, if we went below that, $11,000, and that's $23,000. You're responsible for the rest of that. I've known, personally known people in my group, because they've paid their bills. It's just the service the city provides for the residents. Heaven forbid there is no exception, if they get flown out. Adam Dixon in Prestonsburg, he was shocked, that was one of the plots we took last year, and Prestonsburg immediately signed on board. The city residents at that time, if they want to go to 32 states and 1060 bases for only 35 more, they don't have to, because that's available to them, and that gives them a full membership in 32 different states also. This presentation would be, and I would left a packet with each one of these, to do for the city to purchase this for their residents for one year.
And it's what, $22,000, $23,000, you said?
No, no, I mean, that's average cost of the flight. The cost is $10,764 for the Prestonsburg city, I'm sorry, Peyton city.
How much again?
$10,764. But the average flight, like I said, if there was 20, no, there was...
Oh, it is $23,000.
There was 23 flights last year, averaged at $23,000. Those residents had to pay, in Johnson County alone, just $529,000 off. If they would have had this, and they would have been covered if they'd flown out of this, that $529,000 would have been in the community, you know, maybe not cost a hardship for some of those families.
How many helicopters did we get on duty, or?
We got one, and we, it's like a seller, it's like a seller service. We've got logans, they're building and selling, and that way, say they go to 23 tonight, they can come in from Logan in 10 minutes, they have a base there, and they go off the grid. They fly off every week, I hear something. They flew in Louisa last week, they might have done something pretty far.
Of course, I can't imagine anybody not wanting it for their city. I'm just thinking about, or how we're gonna do that, and if we're prepared to do that, and how we can do it if we can swing it.
Do you want, would you prefer me and Kim sit down and look at the, and look at the finances and see if we could possibly, you know, possibly swing it?
Would Jeremy come in on that at all? Jeremy, well, would he, or is it, do we have to bear that cost? There's nothing with the insurance, I don't guess we can do this.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay, that's mostly liability.
Yeah.
I'd look at it.
But, yeah, absolutely, I think we need to look at it.
And so, do you, as a council, just want me and Kim to sit down and go over the finances and see if we could possibly...
Work this out?
Work it out, or whatever?
It's possible, yeah.
Does it sound like a pretty decent idea to you, though?
Oh, it sounds like a wonderful idea to me.
If it just stays on a month. I thought on to this before I even started challenging, and that just ended up into a dog. And Bob knows me, I'm a real type person. I'm a firm believer in this, really.
Do you live in...
Prestonsburg.
In Prestonsburg.
No.
Your name sounds familiar, I said that. So Prestonsburg is doing that currently?
Prestonsburg, the city island, just signed on it.
Does that cover everybody in the household, or is that just...
Everybody, good question, everybody in the household.
In other words, if each residence, if each person that resonates, it's got to do it.
Everybody that resonates. If you've got a son, grandson, if your daughter doesn't have it, they're covered in that package. And they'll get a membership card they put in their wallet, and stickers put on the backs of their car, and a lot of the log force, something, and EMTs, it's up to trying to list to that sticker, and it's a big mistake. You know, sticker out in your car.
And he's like, all these people are certified and sourced on...
Well, they're paramedics and nurses, they're pilots, they're just, they got some brigands, I'm an airline pilot, they're training, it's crazy where they go.
There's no limitation to what hospital you go to, pick up a base at.
It says to be out of Johnson County. There has to be a thanks for risk.
Oh, now, there, there. Okay. And you say that you have a helicopter on the pad there?
And I have.
You can have another one, and you say you're out...
Say they go to column 23, or Holland's Regional, or probably Hall, they'll have that other one flying in here at this date.
Okay, you say around close to 10 minutes, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not hoping to, I'm just getting a...
It's only very, it's very few air miles, but yeah, with the weather ratings and everything, they'll end too.
Each family knows, probably 35.
Yeah. And each family can pay 35, it's a full membership, and that gives them 32 states, 260 bases.
So that's anywhere out of the state of Kentucky, or anywhere else?
Yeah, I mean, Lincoln...
$35 a year?
Yeah.
Is that per household, or per individual?
Per household.
Per household.
If you're in Alabama, Florida, Disney, or if you're hurt, you're still covered on that plot, if you bother to do it.
Doesn't cover anything for a ground damage, or something, it's just flat trapped?
Just a little lady that got airsoft, and she was just flying. Yeah, trapped around Nelson's, one of the pop shippers, she just got her, did that one? They got on some white cars on the weekend, when we paid, while they got on the street.
You ought to tell Rick.
Like I said, let's wait, see what he can do with Kim on the finances.
And we'll, we'll include Mr. Rick Ratliff, too, in that. That way, he can give us...
I'll let the front of you have a pamphlet brochure, a little bit more, a little bit more detail.
Well, Mr. Bowling, we sure appreciate it. Mr. Bob Pack. Now, you can explain to them a little better than what I can, because when you explained it to me today, it kind of went over my head just a little bit.
Maybe I can explain.
Yeah, you can, though.
Thanks for till you received your request on December 13th, from Big Sandy Water District. They had a pump station fail that supplied the southern part of Lawrence County, the 23 area, and they were needing about $25,000 to $45,000 gallons of water a day. We do have an interconnect with their system. Our personnel did some checking, and felt like we could supply that. Did that for about a 10-day period. They took 285,000 gallons, roughly. The reason I'm here tonight is city ordinance provides for emergency post-ill rate. In this type of case, $2.50 a thousand, has to be approved by city council. It was good we were in a position to help a neighboring district like that, made excellent contact, and they positioned sometime ahead to help us. I'm asking for that, $2.50 a thousand.
How much?
$2.50 a thousand.
Is it under an ordinance or something? We have, I mean...
It is an ordinance, 5403. Oh, that rate's in that ordinance, that what you got, okay. That's in there, then.
I think all he needs is, is council approval's all he needs.
I would motion we approve that, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Big Sandy Water District, and that's awesome, and we can help.
Now, Carter Lane. We did get the contract back from Summit Engineering, and there was one small item in there that Mr. Baldwin didn't like, and so he sent it back and revised it and all that, and we have got the contract back as we speak. Do you need to explain anything more to him?
It's just a contract for the engineering services on phase one of the project, which will include the engineering design and the surveying, and then phase two of the basic engineering fees, which is bidding and construction administration. And my understanding from Mr. McClure is that the fees, the costs associated with that are within the parameters of the grant.
Yes, Kim, they are, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I think the mayor's asking for the council approval of this agreement between the city and Summit Engineering to get the Carter Lane project going further, the first phase.
I'll make a motion that we x-exess with Summit Engineering, the revision of my daughter.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is executive session.
I need a motion to go into executive session.
This will be to discuss future acquisition or sale of real property pursuant to KRS 61.810 subsection B.
Motion to go into executive session.
Say it.
I need a motion to go back into regular session.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's no action taken in executive session.
At this time, the mayor would like, is seeking a motion to approve with respect to the lease agreement on the Taze Branch property with E Kentucky Medical Manufacturing Institute. We need approval of the memorandum of that lease agreement for final of record, as well as approval of a subordination agreement for the benefit of the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration, in the form as we attach to the minutes of the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we do the approval of the memorandum of lease and subordination agreement.
I'll say it, guys.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Open to council. Open to the floor, and Regina, you said, Miss, Mr. Joe Jacobs is here?
I just wanted to stop by and give you a brief update on the Safrauncis School sidewalk project going through the city. As you can see, just by looking around, it's almost, well, it's well over 75% complete at this point. Had it not been for holidays and the weather, it probably would be complete. But that project is ongoing, it is almost ready to wrap up, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Counsel, got any questions?
I made my comment last month, when I said the sidewalks look good, you know, I think that they made a great addition.
I agree, I agree, Jim.
I wondered if we were 100% complete on that, I didn't know if we were or not, so...
No, we're not 100% complete on it, but we haven't had our weekly update this week, cause of the weather, but we are very, very close.
Only question I got, when you gonna give us more money?
That was gonna be my question.
Four sidewalks, yeah. Give me more.
It actually is Regina's department. I'll take care of the management.
That's what those passive bucks do.
It does look great, and it was badly needed, especially across from Mayo. And it was a three long process.
Oh, that was dangerous.
That's what it was, or uneven.
We need more.
Mr. Jacobs, we appreciate it, and just make sure you keep us in mind.
In the loop there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do you have a question?
Yes. How long have they got, has SANS got to do their plans before everything keeps moving?
What was it, total, Kim, 18...
Well, the whole project was like 18 months.
18 months for the entire project?
But it's three to six months for that.
Six months?
I think three to six, I think was what it was.
Did they give a, did they say how long they thought it was taking, or do they think they'll get it on a pretty quick here and start?
I would say until, until tomorrow, that I put pen to paper, that they can get started whenever they want to.
And they, they give you a kind of estimate, how long they can do it for?
I'll find out tomorrow. I can promise you that.
So they've got all the surveying and all that, where they can do anything else, or anything else could be taken?
Just phase one.
Have to do a final design.
Yep.
How long does that usually take, Regina? I know it can, it varies, I'm sure, but you've done this a long time.
I haven't seen that contract, I don't know, Jeff, did it indicate a timeframe in the contract?
No, but it did in the, in the packet that Ms. Kim's got. It's got a timeline in there. She's got a timeline in there.
Period performance for phase one, it's got 9/13/2016 through 8/9/2017.
So by August.
That's just the way that, that's the way they awarded the grant to give you enough time in case something happened.
Listen, I can promise you, I will stay after them. All right, anything else from the floor? Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.